Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's a Committee of the Whole meeting for May 12, 2011. And --
Mayor Ron is absent this evening. Likewise, Clerk Simpsey is absent. Mayor Protem Klebenow.
President.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorneys Emanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Acting Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Human Resource Director Casey. Not here.
She's here. I'm sorry.
Village Planner and Assistant ED Director Malik.
Here.
And lastly, EDD and Assistant Manager Kimball. Here. Do you have a form, Your Honor?
Thank you. I will stand and hear the pledge of allegiance, please.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item are the minutes of the Committee of the Whole, April 28, 2011, and the board meeting held May 2, 2011. Are there any corrections? Okay, having done, we'll put it on for Monday's meeting. Open form. We have two requests.
Okay. We have a request from Tom Mulhern, 500 North Cass Avenue in Westmont.
Good evening. Reason for my open form request is next Friday I will be participating again in the Special Olympics torch run, law enforcement torch run for Special Olympics, cop on the top event at Dunkin' Donuts at 19 West 63rd Street at the ungodly hour of 5:30 in the morning until about noon. And just want to let the board know that as well as let anyone in Westmont that wants to come and see. Right now, I have one deputy chief who volunteered to be up there with me, so if you wish to see your chief and one deputy chief up on the roof, not making donuts, but up on the roof raising funds for Special Olympics, will be doing so. The other reason for my request is on June 5, I was asked today if we would be interested in actually having the actual DuPage leg of the torch run itself come through Westmont. Again, we did this last year, and that will be on June 5 sometime in the morning. Their schedule is somewhere between 7:30 and noon, usually more along the lines of 9:00. If I don't have any board approval or an agenda item, seeking the board's permission to have a moving road closure on Cass Avenue. We would start at the police station down to Burlington and Cass, no longer than 10 minutes. It's protected by the DuPage County Sheriff's Office, other law enforcement agencies who have enough traffic, we'll have traffic control. But just to let you know that we'd close Cass Avenue as the race, or not the race, but as the run comes down from the police station to Burlington and Cass. And I wasn't sure if that needed board approval or just permission to do the rolling closure.
Need board approval for that?
I don't remember. In the past?
Yeah, I don't remember having an approval.
I don't remember approving it last time. Do you?
I think, I don't know. It's, how, the streets aren't going to be blocked out?
We've done it from down in 63rd Street. We've done it coming in from Route 83. We've gone down Route 83 in the past last year. It was considered more of a parade, and permission was given by the police department. And since, again, it was moving, the traffic has slowed, but, you know, it can't be detoured. There's no actual road closure. It's just more of a moving obstacle.
Yeah.
And it's considered a parade, this issue simply by the police department. The only reason I question it is because there's a parade on the agenda tonight for street closures.
Right.
So I just want you to be consistent.
Okay.
Do we have time to get it on Wednesday?
It's on June 5, Thursday, Committee of the Whole before then, but then you could vote on it. It's a Sunday. I know retroactively, the board has done votes in the past, retroactively, I don't know.
Can't we just put it here for Monday?
Yeah.
Monday?
Yeah. I'll get your information back tomorrow. Thank you. And like I said, I'll be there next Monday, or next Friday, and also on June 5, we'll be sending notices out to the businesses as well.
I hope you don't need an umbrella.
Friday the 20th?
I hope not again. On 20, that's, May 20, from 5:30 until, it's going to be hard to be there at 5:30, but from 5:30 till noon. And we will be selling, looking, seeking donations, selling hats, shirts, coffee mugs. I do owe someone two coffee mugs from last year, which I haven't forgotten, that were paid for, but I ran short. So we'd like to encourage as much, all money goes towards Special Olympics. The police department, the village gets nothing from this. 100 percent of the proceeds goes towards the Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run for Illinois.
No rain.
I hope not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, we also have a request for open form presentation by Larry Forsberg of One South Cass Avenue.
Good evening. I'd just like to take a couple moments tonight to remind everybody of the upcoming Westmont Auto Mile Cruise in the Summer Tent Sale. We have seven dealers are going to be participating in this great tent sale, starting Monday, May 23, going through Saturday, June 4. Great time to buy a car. These are world-class dealers that we have up here on Ogden Avenue. For all those who are out there shopping, you'll be able to register at each one of the participating dealers. You can win a 42-inch LCD HDTV. We're also in support of the veterans, because this is running over Veterans Day. You'll be able to go to the westmontautomile.com website, and any veteran will be able to register to win a free cruise, to show support for our veterans. So come on out between May 23 and June 4. Visit our car dealers, support them. They've been a real great supporter of our community events, and let's make this a huge success. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, and that's it for our, okay, on reports. I have reports from the mayor. First of all, the mayor is sorry he couldn't make it. He's still recovering from surgery. He's doing better, but still not quite well enough to attend. We all wish him a speedy recovery, and hopefully he'll be at the next meeting. Right now, we have Pat Womack from BMW.
Larry and Fred wanted me to give the Westmont Auto Mile a pitch, but I think he did a pretty good job already, so I'm not going to bore you with that. I just need about 45 minutes of everybody's time. No, I'm going to be real brief. I'm requesting two things. One, a few years ago, probably four or five years ago, I requested that we look into a stoplight on what, Westmont Drive, excuse me, and Ogden Avenue there by us and the Health Club. For whatever reasons, it wasn't approved. I think there was an issue with Clarendon Hills at the time, as Clarendon Hills is on the other side of the street there, and I think there was a little bit of a traffic issue maybe too, where we didn't have enough. But I think going forward, with Infinity moving in across the street, and there's been some pretty significant accidents in the last month there, that I'd like to bring that up again, and maybe we have that looked at again if possible. However that needs to be done, I'll leave that up to you. Secondly, is the main reason that I'm here. We would like to request to improve the well site that is behind the Banco Popular location that the city owns, and ask if we would be able to lease that property if we were able to improve the site. Right now, it's gravel and kind of overgrown. I don't, I don't know really a lot about the well site, other than it needs to be attended to once a year, so we have to allow you access. I'm sure you have access now, obviously, but part of the agreement, if we're able to do this, we would have to allow you access. There's some drainage issues back there that obviously we would take care of. I think we would improve the site greatly, and I would be pretty positive that the bank would appreciate what goes on back there too, and it would look better for the city. So I'd like to bring that up also.
Madam Chairman, I think Public Works Director May and I visited with these folks out on the site. Steve, I don't know if you had anything you'd like to add?
I don't have any.
Can we ask what the site would be used for, then?
Just storage of new cars. Nothing old, nothing raggedy.
And you're going to blacktop it?
Yes, ma'am.
Would that cause any stormwater problems?
It would require to be an engineered site and meet all of the stormwater ordinances of the village and DuPage County.
We've done some previous work on this. There was an agreement, I guess, previously that's obviously expired at this point in time, but there's been some previous work done. There's been some drawings done already. Obviously, we'd revisit that with everybody's approval and make sure that it works.
I mean, the lot was much larger. They previously purchased the, I'll just say, the north half of the parcel, and we have the, you know, the south portion where the actual well site is housed. So it is an unimproved lot, otherwise. It does have drainage running across it between the two. The engineering they have done was for the portion that they own, and that could easily be extended. And Kim, you know, notified them, but they'll, they've already got a stormwater design for the portion that they own, and they would just have to look into whether or not they've got enough attention to accommodate the rest of the lot. As far as our concerns, we just need to maintain the building and the well that's, you know, within it. So the improvements on that lot, from our point of view, is just to our benefit. It's something we have to, you know, keep the weeds down and mull it, otherwise.
You're suggesting a lease arrangement for that?
I think at some point in time, there was some arrangement that never was consummated, but I don't know the specifics of that.
Madam Chairman, if the village board is so inclined, we could add this to the agenda for June the 2nd, is it, Ron?
That'd be the next Committee of the Whole.
Next Committee of the Whole.
Do you have a copy of the lease, then? Anybody else have any questions?
Sounds good.
Steve, while you're still there, as far as the light goes at Westmont Drive, is that something we're going to have to deal with county and state and everybody else again?
Yeah, the highway is actually, well, it's a federal highway, but it's maintained and managed by the Illinois Department of Transportation, and that's who the requesting, you know, authority would be. And then, just to, not to speak for them, but to speak for them, they would make sure that there was a certain minimum warrants that were met. If there is a significant accident history, that could be one. And even if warrants are met, that doesn't mean they're going to build it. They're going to look for, you know, a funding source. They'll just issue the permit to do so.
How could, how soon will we be able to contact somebody and have them look at it?
Well, they won't, well, they're, what they'll do is permit us to look into it, so you would have to commission, you know, actual traffic counts and stuff, and there's expenses involved with doing that unless we can get the, I don't know who was the mayor's and manager. Somebody had interns that they were looking for, you know, places to do traffic counts, and maybe we can do something preliminarily.
Steve, I-
I don't remember what that resource was.
I thought when we talked about this a few years ago, I thought it was Clarendon Hills that they sort of put the kibosh on it. They were opposed to it, and they had to be in agreement before we could proceed.
Yeah, the, well, that's the way I remember it, too. The Illinois Department of Transportation is going to expect cooperation from the owners of which would be the, each leg of each side street, and the one in the south side is Clarendon Hills, and the north side's the village of Westmont. So they would expect support from both communities.
So perhaps we should first address it with them, and in view of the Infinity dealership, they may have a different slant on things now.
I've actually, I believe there, I've already indicated that they have renewed interest in that.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have any? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Next on the mayor's list, Monday, May 16, we'll be swearing in the new patrol officer, Brandon Seaman. So we'll look forward to that on Monday. And also, we have before us the EMS Week proclamation. This is the EMS Week, and we'll read that on Monday as well. For trustee items, we'll start with Sue.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder that one week from tomorrow, on May 20, is the Third Annual Ty Warner Park Relay for Life. So try to come out and do something the best you can to help us fight this horrible disease, cancer. I think everyone in this town, everyone in this state, everyone in this country, in some way, has been touched by this dreadful disease. So it's a wonderful venue to go out and have a good time and to raise funds to hopefully, at some point, maybe not in our lifetime, but at some point, find a cure for that disease. So that would be great if everyone would come out. The other thing I wanted to mention is I had a voicemail. Generally, when we get our voicemails, they come via email through a, like a WAV file, and there's usually a little, like a caller ID, and this one didn't have the caller ID, so I'm not sure who it came from. It was lengthy and was ultimately cut off. So whoever it was, I'd really like to talk to you. So if you're watching this and you get, you know, you understand that I can't call you because I don't know who you are, and I really would like to talk to you. So if you called me last week, please call me again or email me so that I can get in contact with you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We're doing the trustees first, by the way. Trustee Bob?
Nothing this evening, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Steve?
Nothing this evening, ma'am. Thanks.
Trustee Ellen?
Couple of things. First of all, I was absolutely thrilled. I got an invitation, asked a trustee Scott Wednesday, Monday night, to go out and watch the Fiat SWAT team training and do their end-of-two-week class simulated hostage rescue that took all day and right up until dark, till they finally debilitated the barricaded subject. Fake, but good. And I just wanted to let everybody know that I had heard from several people who have sat in the chief's chair in the Westmont Police Department over the past several years that Sergeant Jim Schlicker, who's the commander of the Fiat SWAT team, is really in his element, and that he is very good at what he does there. So I had the opportunity to see a little bit of it, and I was extremely impressed. I hope we never have to use it in our town to the extent that they were training with four hostages and one of them being shot and all of that. But Commander Schlicker was obviously well-respected by all of the members of the Fiat SWAT team from municipalities that make up the SWAT team, and I was, I was very, very impressed with, with how he handled it, so I did want to let him know. The second thing is, we've been having our budget workshops, and now the governor is looking at taking revenue away from the municipalities in town, and the Illinois Municipal League has calculated, based on what is being pushed in Springfield, as to how much might come away from the various towns. And you can, you know, pick any town in the state on the website and see what, what the impact will be. For Westmont, it's projected that we will lose just shy of $600,000 in revenue. If that happens, now, everybody, of course, is vigorously opposing it, and there was a bill up last, last week or the week before in Springfield to start consolidating various units of government, consolidating townships, consolidating different things to cut down on expenditures, and that did not pass. It was defeated. But we're struggling with our budget here because, you know, we have a lot of unanswered questions, and we're trying to come up with a balanced budget, and we know there will be various things which will have to be done, which will be extremely unpopular. If this comes through in Springfield, it's, it's going to be devastating to the town. What I would like to see, and all the department heads can put on their cringe faces, especially our finance department, but I don't know if it's possible. It is possible it will take a lot of work. But what I would like to see, in an effort to help me with coming to terms with the budget, we get our proposed budget from the department heads, and it has all the line items of what they'd like to purchase and where they'd like to go for training and all of that. But what I haven't seen is a reconciliation. I would like to see last year's line-by-line budget reconciliation, and it would take, you know, it is busy work, and I suppose that I could, you know, sit at my desk in my house and, you know, take three weeks and do it myself from the finance ordinances. But I would like to see that everything that we budgeted for last year, what happened with it? Did we actually purchase the items? Did we end up going over, so our budget was short? Are there things that were line-itemed last year that we ended up not purchasing, so they're line-itemed again? I think a reconciliation, I don't know about the rest of the trustees, but the reconciliation would tell me things, and like Public Works, we have a lot of contracts up to a certain amount that we see, you know, we okay at a dollar, but it's an open contract. We know what it's budgeted, but we don't know what reconciled with last year's budget. So I know it's a daunting task, and I understand that, but in my mind, in order to say, what are we going to be able to cut? What are things we cannot cut for sure? What have we given up in the past, and we are now on our third or fourth year without having purchased, therefore, we need it? And God forbid, we see things that have just been put in there and haven't been purchased because they're not necessary, and the money's been floating and used for something that wasn't budgeted. Because we are going to, we face the potential to be in a devastating position with the budget, I would like a reconciliation. So please let me know if that is doable.
Can we talk after the meeting so I can maybe get a little bit better understanding of what you're looking for? I think we can put something together, but I'm not quite sure I'm clear. I know that the budget does show actuals, and it does show carryovers, so I want to make sure I understand the exact format that you would like to see something in.
Right, because I know there's-
And we get that monthly.
Right. But it, I'd like it put together so that we can see what it looks like for, based on last year's entire budget that we approved. So we know where there was extra money, what wasn't purchased, what went over, because there are things that we cannot cut if they have routinely gone over.
Yeah, I think I'm sort of getting the concept.
Because, for instance, fuel, I know that this year's budget is trying to be as, as clairvoyant as possible without being a crunch if fuel continues to rise. But I'd like to see what we budgeted last year with, for fuel, and where we came out on actual.
So you want to see more detail, other than the summary per account?
Yes.
If you have that in the budget, you want to see more detail with the-
Yes.
Or line-item detail.
Yeah, because then that tells us where there's things that, there's no way that we're going to be able to cut, and then there's other things that maybe they floated, you know? Or they were, they actually, actually ended up being under budget, so to, to budget the same amount this year may not be prudent use of funds.
Let's see what we can come up with.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lee?
The only thing I'd like to say is I would like to thank the Westmont Fire Department for helping me out with a problem that I had about a week ago. I appreciate the expedience in which it was taken care of, and I do appreciate it greatly. We have a, we have a fine fire and police department, and have always stood by both of them very strongly in anything that they do, and they're very valuable to us. So alls I can say is, great group of people, great guys, and hopefully, we can just keep continuing on the same path we are right now. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. A few items I've had is the, this Friday is the electronic recycling starts. So Ty Warner Park Parking Lot, and it's from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And it'll be again once a month until?
Second Friday of every month, 7:00 to 1:00.
Okay, until what, December, I think it is?
Correct.
Until December. So anybody who's got any of the electronic stuff, let's, this is your time to get rid of it. We have a public information meeting, committee meeting, this Monday, 6:00 PM. So if we can come, and the agenda, I guess, is out. I didn't look at it. I believe you set 6:00 PM on it?
It is.
Okay. We have a Memorial Day service, since trustees won't be able to speak next Monday. There's Memorial Day service, obviously, Monday, and it starts off at 9:00 at Clarendon Hills, and then it comes and starts in our parade, and the parade, I think, is usually around 10:30. So hopefully, you'll have good weather for that. So please, and we'll see if the clerk or the mayor can't re-announce it Monday to remind people.
It's not next Monday?
No, no, no. The Monday of Memorial Day.
Okay.
But we won't have another Committee of the Whole meeting till then, so I'm trying to mention it now. And then we'll have Ginny probably mention it again Monday, and then it's up to the residents to remember it. And I want to wish a happy birthday to Sue and to Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Now, we're going to get down to our real business here. Clerk, do you have anything?
I don't believe the clerk had anything for this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. Attorney?
Nothing tonight. Thanks.
Oh, gee, and I thought we were going to, we were going to give it. How about?
Just a couple of things.
Okay, I knew somebody had something here.
Like an executive session for potential land sale and personnel following the regular meeting. And also passed out a board action sheet for the declaration of village property as surplus. I apologize, we didn't get this on the agenda, but we have a number of vehicles that we'd like to declare surplus. Because of the timing with the DuPage Mayor's and Managers Auction, we would need to get this approved by Monday in order to make their deadlines. These are all vehicles that have previously been retired and have been out of the fleet now for some time, or they are, vehicles have been confiscated through the police department. So if the board is okay, we'd like to add that to the agenda for Monday. Otherwise, we would need to wait till the fall auction in order to declare the surplus.
Shouldn't be any problem.
And then, the last thing I was going to mention, just kind of on the theme of what trustee Emery was talking about, our next budget workshop will be May 23 at 7:00. As she mentioned, there's a lot of angst and anxiety over what's going to happen down in Springfield these days. The Illinois Municipal League has told us that we'll probably know something by May 20. So that's kind of our timeframe, and hopefully, we'll have some answers then before we have that next budget workshop. And as trustee Emery said, the village's potential share of loss of revenues, close to $600,000. The Illinois Municipal League has put together an analysis based upon Senate district, and just, I'll use as an example, Senator Dillard's district, which includes Bowling Brook, Clarendon Hills, Darien, Downers Grove, et cetera. There's a potential loss of almost $11 million if, if the local government distributive fund, funds are cut, as, as the governor has proposed. So we're talking about some pretty significant dollars into this part of the county that we would be losing. So anyway, that is our plan for going forward with the budget review. And that's all I have.
We'll get on to unfinished business. Westmont Center, board to consider approving the lease with Marker School District 60 for certain space at the Westmont Center, One South Cass Sale.
I passed out for the board, and I think you received this afternoon, the latest version of the lease agreement, which we received back from Marker School District. And there's a cover explanation, email that goes with that from the business manager, Dean Romano, who is here tonight. I did attend the Marker School Board meeting following the last regular village board meeting that we had. We did talk about the terms that we discussed on Monday night, including the amortization schedule. Based on the email that we've received back and the discussion that they've had, it appears like what they have proposed is a 365-day notice following that first term. I don't want to misinterpret the, the information, but I believe that's, that's the proposal. And there, I understand there's no interest then in the amortization schedule that the board had talked about. But I believe all the other terms are pretty much what we had discussed previously. So I know he's here this evening. If the board members have any questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to try to answer them.
John, have you had a chance to review?
I didn't.
Are you okay with everything?
Well, I didn't get a redlined copy. I got the clean version, and it appears that the only change is to the termination rights. And seems like they're trying to strike a compromise that protects their interests and follows what, you know, the trustees, the majority of the trustees' comments were from, from last week. So it's up to you, I guess, whether that's livable or not.
So, so basically, the way it is now, it's an initial three-year lease, correct?
Correct.
But we would not be able to enact a termination of 365 days until the end of the third year?
Correct.
Minimum four years.
And that would only be if I was read it correctly, that if we had a contract for sale?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, during, the way they worded it during the, we have the right to terminate, well, commencing upon the first additional term, the village has a right to terminate. And then it says during the second and third term, you have a similar right to terminate, only in the event you have a signed agreement to sell. So for some reason, I don't know if that was an oversight, but they didn't include that language about- that language about needing a signed agreement to sell in order to terminate during the first renewal term.
So, we could terminate under any reason we want to after the first, but after years six?
Yep.
They'd have to give them a 365-day notice and it would have to be because we were going to sell the building.
Correct. And I know Mr. Romano may want to comment on that, I see him happily raising his hand.
Thank you.
That was an oversight. The intention here for our board was that we were looking at what we discussed the Thursday, the last time I joined you for the committee of the whole, which was there would be one renewal at that point, at the end of the first renewal, so the start of the second renewal. That would be a point at which we would be able to give 30, 365-day notice for us to leave. So, this was a seven-year discussion, not four-year discussion. And that there would not be a scenario, it would have to be predicated on the sale of the building, which was what we had discussed the first committee of the whole, I was able to join you.
So, minimum seven years and only in the event of a, of a contract for sale?
Yes.
I definitely would like to find a way to make this work, but it seems that we keep getting these little showstoppers that change things. And I don't know if I'm comfortable waiting or having this seven-year commitment because truly at the end of the day, if we have an opportunity to lease that building at a much higher rate, I think in this economy, we have to, you know, exercise great fiscal responsibility and not turn away any opportunity. I'm fine with the 365 days, but only in your, you know, year four and beyond. I, I, I'm not comfortable with seven years, I'm just not. And I, and I want to see this work. I really want to see this work. But we have a responsibility to the people of this town as well. I'm just not comfortable with seven years.
I think procedurally at this point, basically, Markers already approved those conditions, so they're essentially saying, this is what we're comfortable with. If we're comfortable approving it, that's fine. If not, then I think they're prepared to, to look elsewhere.
Okay.
That's kind of the direction that Mr. Romano's...
You know, the flip side of it is, and I mean, I'll be perfectly honest, I don't want to see that space empty either.
Right.
I mean, even with the very small and reasonable rents that we're commanding, so to speak, at this time, we're still in the red on that building at the end of the day. We're still losing money on that building. So, for that space to be empty until someone else comes along, or maybe doesn't come along, I'm not real comfortable with that either. So, if there's any way to still work this out, I would really want to do that, but honestly, I'm just not comfortable with the way it's presented tonight.
If they're, if the final, if their final position is minimum seven years with 365 days, I can't shackle the, I can't shackle the village or the residents with that. I am, I am not only uncomfortable with it, as is trustee Seneca, I am unwilling to do it.
I would have to echo the sentiments. We have a responsibility. And, I mean, depending on how things go, hopefully things are going to get better and, but to carry a lease that long, I, I can't, I can't see it not in, no, I'm sorry, I'd have to say at this point, my answer would be no.
Unless I missed something, I thought that was the way we had left it last time, that we were looking at year four.
I thought we made it, I thought we made it very clear.
So, I, you know, I would, year four, in a heartbeat, big yes vote. Want to work with the taxing bodies, want to see this happen. I think it's a great opportunity for the schools, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the village, but I'm not so sure it's a good opportunity under these particular conditions.
Not a, not at a seven-year term.
Because I think this is what we were looking at before, was seven-year with 365. And it's like, so there's, you know, there's no middle ground here and if that's the, you know, the end result. And I understand we're losing money on the building. Even with the lease, we're still losing money on the building, but no, can't do it.
Well, they heard what we had to say and their board decided that they wanted to come back with this and there's nothing wrong with that.
No, absolutely not.
The negotiations is all about.
Right.
So, at that point, I have no problem with what they came back with, it's, I'm not in agreement with it.
You have no problem with it.
I give them credit for coming back with them trying.
Absolutely.
Sure. So, I'd be no enders too.
No, I, I agree, I, I wish we had that crystal ball too.
I know.
Because the four years would be ideal by the time the TIF study's done and economy might be getting better, but to go seven years is kind of scary to ask the residents to hold off that long and not knowing what that building's going to cost us. And I, and I, I love the building, I hate the thought of selling it because that's, that's my baby back there, but I know, I have to be realistic. And I, I don't want to impede the village on something that might have to get done. I think all the other tenants in there, we could, if something happened within the next year, two years, we have no problems breaking the lease.
You mean, I'm noticing it's much less restrictive, yes?
So, this really puts a, a problem, I think, for the village, but it'll be up to the board.
I think Mr. Romano wants to make a comment.
Yeah, I would have to agree as well. Seven years is a long time and I just want to ask Dean one quick question. Is, I guess, is that really their ultimate offer? I, I know this is kind of the same thing what everybody went over last time, but is, are they stuck on seven years, are the two terms?
Well, let me tell you a little bit, and there's new information that happened as of today. As you know, we needed to go out to bid to do the construction so that it would be ready for us to move in. That came in at double what we had anticipated. So, it came in at $167,680 or so with regards to renovating the space in order for us to be able to occupy it. When we walked away, or when I walked away from our last meeting, it was my understanding that the 365 would be with the first renewal, or the first contract, that would actually be able to happen at any point in that first term. So, that's what we went back and discussed with our board. The biggest concern that our board has is that we've got almost a $200,000 investment that will only be able to amortize over a four-year period if we're looking at it. Their desire was to be able to amortize that over a seven-year period, which makes it much more palatable, as I'm sure you can imagine. So, just as you represent taxing body, we have to be fiscally responsible with our resources as well, which shortening that down is pretty substantial, especially since our quotes or actual bid documents that they'll be able to review have come in so dramatically higher than what was anticipated.
And I mean, was there...
Point of clarification, our original discussion was that this was a 12-year lease that was discussed coming down to seven, which is what our board, and so we've heard similar things on our board about, we thought we were down one path, then it's changed. So, just wanted to make sure that that was clear to everyone here, that the board has recognized the need to shorten that term and has a desire to try and work with the village.
Can you answer a question?
Sure.
What was the reasoning for the doubling in the cost? Was it anything to do with the building or...
Well, from our original estimates, we were going to be converting the sprinkler heads, so that we were spacing them out to meet the new needs, enclosing all of the offices, taking them from floor to ceiling deck so that there was soundproofing between administrators and common people passing through, which we thought was appropriate. In doing so, we had to take down the ceiling tile and put up a whole new ceiling grid. And then, one of the most expensive items is the HVAC, which I know was a comment that's been brought up here. So, there would be almost a new HVAC setup within the entire space, because now we have a situation where there is no opportunity for airflow, which is an open space currently. We would actually have airflow that needs to be specific to an office, which means we need to have a return from each office. So, those components, as compared to the initial quote that we had received, those are substantial changes to that. And from the board members that have heard about our bid opening this morning, they were concerned about and asked the same question. And that's where that came in. When I say it's about $200,000, we still have about $22,500 worth of telephone system and office furniture to fit the new space that we would have to invest as well at that point.
And any or any additional overruns that could happen?
We've actually got some money built in, a small contingency fund.
You know, I'll just, I'll throw it out, I'll just throw this out here, I don't know if it's something that we could work through or not, but similar to the way a lot of our retail landlords negotiate leases, is it out of the realm of possibility that in view of, now that the costs have virtually more than doubled
Yeah.
From our first early discussions, if we could maybe still look at the 365, but after the first lease, after the first three years, so like in year four, but perhaps we work in some months of free rent while they do their build-out to sort of help a little bit. I know it wouldn't be a lot, because the rent is so low to begin with.
Yeah.
But, you know, maybe we could negotiate...
Their, their rent wouldn't start until their build-out's complete, that's why they're looking for July...
So, oh, so we wouldn't charge them rent to build-out anyway?
Right.
So, we're already doing that?
Right.
Okay, I didn't read, is that in there? I didn't see that in there.
Yeah.
Okay, I missed it.
And the amortization schedule that was suggested the last time was conveyed
Yeah.
And, you know, rejected and they came back with this. To their credit, you know, in a traditional landlord-tenant arrangement, what they're asking for is completely normal, but the village is not a normal landlord and you've got other concerns, as you've expressed.
I'd really like to see this work, I really would, some way, somehow.
Well, and I recognize that there's an interest and I think that the interest is very well understood by our board of the village's interest in protecting their flexibility for moving forward. I also recognize that our concern is being in a place where we're going to have to stop and move again, which would be outside our control. We did not discuss in any great detail, and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, a discussion where there would be a four-year uninterrupted opportunity. And if there was any opportunity that I see, taking this back to my board again, would be a scenario where it was four years uninterrupted with the amortization of what would have been a seven-year term paid out to us for any year prior. In other words, if we were to amortize it over that period, that's what the amortization would really need to look like. So, we're at least recouping, I know my board is prepared to amortize this investment over, you know, a seven-year period, but not over a four. So, I'm happy, again, I'm very excited about trying to make this partnership work, I think you guys have seen that by our attendance, but I think that's where it would likely need to fall. And again, I can't speak for them, they're to have to take action. Our agenda goes out tomorrow, so I could put that on our agenda. But I, as I can feel some frustration, it's shared. We're trying so hard to make something work, so I'd be happy to do that if that's at the pleasure of the board.
Fred, if this thing doesn't go through, are we helping them try to find anything in town?
We would certainly be willing to do that.
Do we have anything in town that would be suitable for?
I'm sure we could come up with some other alternative space and we'd be happy to assist them in their search.
For what it's worth, we won't be able, this is our last item for this year. Our timeline would not provide us any opportunity and we've already expended substantial resources in architectural services to get the drawings and the bid, as I'm sure you guys are familiar with how that goes. So, not that that should put any influence on the decision of the board, because you have to make your decisions based on what your goals are for the community. But I, thank you for the...
It's difficult, living in Marker and looking at this from two different sides, it's, it's difficult. And I really want to see this work, because I do live in Marker, I want to see it work. Hopefully, we can keep, keep at it.
Mulling over the weekend and seeing if somebody has a hail mary they can throw out there for us.
We're thinking caps.
As far as the vote then for Monday, you want to vote up and down, up or down what is in front of you, which is what is approved by the district, or do you want to vote up and down some counter-proposal?
Yeah.
Which I think might be counterproductive
Yeah.
And drag this out.
And they don't have the time to drag it out.
No, and, and really, this is our last set of meetings for this month.
Yeah.
So...
Up or down on the proposal?
And I know time is of the essence.
Up or down on the proposal?
Probably up or down and then...
Okay.
I mean, I don't...
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, that'll be on for Monday then.
Okay.
New, anything else on this? Okay, going to new business, Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism. Board to consider contracts for services with the Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. Guess who's back?
I believe everybody has a, a yellow hand out here if you want to kind of follow along with the presentation this evening. First of all, thank for the opportunity to share this information here publicly with the board and with the community at large. A couple of weeks ago, we had the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau Executive Director and Scott Cotton, the General Manager of the Westmont, excuse me, Giltwood Fields Marriott Resort, out here to kind of share some insights on what's going on with our membership in the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is kind of a side effort, if you will, to that work that's going on. This is projects, these are projects that are basically undertaken by the chamber. So, let's talk a little bit about what's going on. Tours and goals, why? What we really are striving to do to increase the visibility of Westmont. If people aren't thinking about Westmont, we're not going to be on a radar screen, we're not going to be getting them to our restaurants, we're not going to be getting them to our car dealers, we're not going to be getting them to our retailers. We'll lose all those types of revenues if people aren't thinking Westmont. So, a big part of this is visibility. We're really here to promote our business community, our activities, our special events that go on during the course of the year. We're very unique in what we have to offer here. We want not only encourage our residents, our guests, but the people who work in town. And we also have to remember that we're competing with all the other surrounding communities, not only in DuPage, but in the greater Chicago area, for what we do and what we have to offer here. So, that's also a major factor in what we do. The key communication tools that we use to reach out to the general public, you'll see in front of you, there's the most current DuPage Guide. This is actually a publication that's distributed nationally. If you look through that, you'll see Westmont's mentioned in there, probably, I think, I counted to 18 times. There's also a, an ad in there from a local hotel, and there's also an ad in here that we run in there to promote Westmont. We also, on an annual basis, produce a, or some, every two years, we produce a community map to promote what's going on in town. The Events and Eaterys Guide is published on an annual basis. We use local, provide the local information, our community guide that's published every second year. So, we're using a variety of tools, lightbulb banners, audio TV. If you walk around downtown or if you listen to local cable TV, you'll hear our audio ads promoting Westmont on an ongoing basis, not only in the Westmont in, in Hall, but our special events that come up on an ongoing basis. In terms of things that we're looking to do this year, our ShopDine Discover ad campaign, we're going to focus on that, the DuPage Visitors Guide. Salt Creek Program Book is an ad that we've been running for, for several years. This piece actually is circulated to 10,000 people, ranging from Chicago on the east to Aurora on the west, to Cankey Key on the south, to Winnetka North Shore on the north, and there's a nice little ShopDine Discover piece. So, we get a nice coverage from that. We also promote, we've got the new display case in the Westmont Train Station, that's been very well received. We're going through an awful lot of literature there, we've had some promotional ads that we've posted there. Couple of new things that we're working on that aren't factored into this, because there's no direct cost that we're building into this, we're doing as part of our chamber work, is we're going to be launching a new Facebook, a ShopDine Discover Westmont Facebook page. We're in negotiations with a local connoisseur of restaurants to do some critiques for us and you'll be able to go there to find out what's going on with our restaurants, our menu plus restaurants in town, what's going on with local retailers. You'll see us using a lot more Twitter this year to help people get information on what's going on in terms of not only our special events, but things that restaurants or retailers may be offering on a daily basis. We're using a little bit more social media. Why? Why are we doing this? What's going on? What brings, what, what brings people to, to Westmont? What are the attractions? If you look at the key things that we have coming in, we have about 500 guests that will come out for Relay for Life on the 20th of May. Red White BBQ will be somewhere between 5,000 and 7,000 people coming out for that event. Race to the Flag, we're expecting somewhere around 400 people for that event. Our cruise nights over the course of the summer bring in approximately 5,000 guests. Our new... Our new Archimonde Park is expected to bring in at least 1,500. Our Fourth of July celebration, I think this is a relatively conservative number, somewhere around 12,000 and up that come out for that event alone. Trick or Treat Trail, several hundred people will come out. Our Haunted Forest Tour, about 1,000. Holidays, just the parade itself usually brings out a couple thousand people. If I do a very modest calculation on what our restaurants bring out, our 90-plus restaurants a year, that number's over 700,000 and that's a very, very conservative number of people to come out and see our 90-plus restaurants. And we factor in the Westmont Auto Mile, and again, this is a very conservative number also. We're looking at about 110,000 guests. What I'd like you to do is kind of recalibrate your thought process on what you consider a tourist. A tourist just isn't somebody who's flying in from the west coast or the east coast that visits the Chicago area. We have people coming through Westmont. If we look at our traffic activity, our Ogden Corridor is about 35,000 vehicles daily. Our 63rd Street Corridor, which we're about to invest a lot of time and energy in building up, currently is about 15,000 vehicles. Cass Avenue, about 18,000. Chicago and Aprilville, about 12,000. 55th Street, approximately 18,000. If you add those numbers up, we have about 98,000 vehicles passing through our community. We also have to consider those people as tourists. Those are people, we need to capture their attention. We need to capture their dollars. We need to get them to visit our restaurants. We need to get them to visit our retailers. We need to get them to be a part of our community events and thus make Westmont even more successful. Some of the key projects that we're working on for this year, again, I've talked about the Westmont Auto Mile earlier tonight. That $24,000 that you see there is a direct pass-through. Those dollars go right into the Westmont Auto Mile efforts to support the fireworks, to support Taste of Westmont, support Holidays, and that's what that money is targeted for. Our ShopDine Discover campaign is going to be a four-week campaign that will be in two newspapers, Trip Local and also in the Westmont Progress. So on a weekly basis in those two newspapers, on Wednesdays and Thursdays, you'll hit about 45,000 households that will basically be promoting the participating merchants in that program. We also have a proposal in here to take out, and this is kind of a unique opportunity that just surfaced this year. For those who may know, the schools are getting some new scoreboards. They have a very unique opportunity for us to take out a lifetime ad, which is estimated to be between 15 to 20 years for $5,000. So if you do the math on 20 years, that breaks down to about $250 a year. And what we propose that ad to be over the life of that would be a shop-local type marketing campaign. We have a lot of people that go through that school gymnasium on an annual basis and what a great way to keep that message in front of families, that really the lifeblood of our community. So that's kind of a unique one-time type investment that I think would make a lot of sense. Our tourism ad package are basically a group of ads that we, I've talked about here, the Community Guide, the Salt Creek Valley, the Rotary Ads and things like that we do. We also have a small fee in here for what it costs to basically run the Citizen of the Year Award Program and our support resources. We also have the Facebook page that we're working on, as I mentioned, the Community Guide. There's a variety of things that we do and there's even a much longer list that I'm not going to go into detail on that we do to support tourism that there's no fees attached. It's just part of what we do as a, as a Chamber of Commerce. So if you tally up these, these fees for this program, and these are relatively modest compared to some of the other communities in the area you're doing. I'm not sure who travels Route 55 here. I've noticed within the last couple of months, Willowbrook is now investing about $8,000 to $10,000 a month in a billboard to get people to stay at the hotels in Willowbrook right now. You know, and again, that's part of our competition. I was talking to somebody today who's looking at having a wedding. They said, well, Old Brook Hills, Old Brook Hill, Willowbrook, Old Brook, where are they going to go? Well, obviously, we'd like to bring them here. We recently helped the Westmont Lions bring the state convention here, the Old Brook Hills Marriott, for the next two years. That's going to bring a nice group of folks here. And we're also in the process of working with them to help negotiate a third year on that contract. So we're doing whatever we can to help keep people coming to Westmont and supporting Westmont and bring more sales tax to Westmont. Any questions and answers, any questions that I can answer regarding the proposal? It's a very similar scope of work to what we've done in the past. I think the really big difference there is this, this ad that we're looking at doing at the school to promote shopping in Westmont. Otherwise, it's pretty routine in terms of what we've been doing in the past.
This ad in the gym, is it going to be something that can change or is it something that's set for life and that's it?
See, that's a great question. That was one of my first questions. I could not, in good faith, take out an ad for 20 years that we couldn't change.
Right.
We have the opportunity to change it at a very modest cost anytime we'd like. It's an ad that will slide in very easily, so it's not something that would require a lot of cost or time or effort to change. So we could update it on an ongoing basis.
I've got to congratulate you, Larry. This is the Chamber that has stepped up to the plate during these times and has gone what I consider is far above than any other Chamber we've ever had or any other Chamber President we've ever, or Director we've ever had. So kudos to you for really doing a great job and bringing us programs that we've never seen before. It's just tremendous.
Well, thank you. It's, it's a pleasure. We're so proud of what Westmont has to offer and we're proud to be able to put the tools together to help promote that and bring more people to the community.
I do have a question, just not on the downside, but according to the calendar, this was supposed to be the Celebrate Downtown Westmont Weekend, but it's not going on. Is that what I understand?
It is not going on. The downtown merchants decided to table the event this year. You recall, we did that the first year and the first year was absolutely wonderful and we kind of lost some enthusiasm in terms of participation. And we're in the process of seeing what we can do to rebuild that. So instead of doing something half-hearted or halfway, we decided, let's take a step back and see what we can do to reconstruct that event. There are some other things that are being worked on in the background right now with the Village and Larry McIntyre is involved. And I'm not going to go into the details right now, but it's some other ways to help generate traffic. And there's a few things we're working with the Park District that will tie into some things they're doing with scarecrows and pumpkin decorations downtown to help liven up things.
Great.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anybody else?
No. Thank you. Thank you for everything you do. We have a wonderful Chamber.
The next item is the Honorary Greg Road Designation. Board to consider a resolution for an honorary street name designating Cass Ave between Richmond and Dallas Street Greg Road in honor of the 30th anniversary of the Greg House Museum.
At the, it was the April 7th Committee, the whole meeting, Mr. Jones from the Historical Society approached the Village Board regarding a request to designate Cass Avenue as Honorary Greg's Road, kind of in conjunction with their anniversary celebration this year. The, it's the 30th anniversary of the Greg House Museum. The, we had previously adopted a policy at the Public Works Committee level as far as how to process requests for honorary designations. So it was referred back to Public Works and I have the request before you tonight to grant that. One of the stipulations in there was the, actually, the way the policy is written is it requires notification of the affected population of the section of street that's going to be changed. And that's a safeguard for, particularly if it's going to be in a residential area or something like that. We don't, we did not do the petition version of it, but we did do a direct notification. And when I say we, you know, the Greg House Museum, you have a copy of the letter that they sent out and they hand-delivered to all the affected properties, so they were all aware that this was going on. We have not received any feedback, any negative feedback regarding the request. So everything's in order, except that my write-up is a little bit in error, so I don't know if this is by resolution or by ordinance, but the actual request is for Greg's Road apostrophe yes, whereas I have it as Greg Road and the historian advised me today that that was the correct historical designation of the road. So I have a sample mock-up here, you know, just kind of, you know, what I typically look up in performance with the other honorary designations that, you know, we've done in the past. I don't know if there's any other questions. Mr. Jones is back again tonight if you had any specific questions regarding their events or anything.
The only, the only thing I would say is we need to put a time limit on this. I think that was part of one of the things that was involved. I would be in favor of one year from the date that it is put up, then it comes down. So I'll break the 30th anniversary and then that's it.
Why can't we leave it up?
Yeah, why not?
You can always leave it up and put in the ordinance. You've got the right to revoke at any time, which you would, but restate that.
Part of the rationale for the discussion was that, well, specifically about Cass Avenue, it is a popular location for these requests. So if you reserve something on Cass Avenue, and this particular one is for Cass Avenue between Richmond and Dallas Street. You have the Muddy Waters designation, which was formerly to the north, but it's now marked at Quincy Street. So there's conflicting, not, I don't want to say conflicting interests. There's multiple interests for the same locations for honorary designation. So unless you want to stack them all up, you know, on top of each other, a time limit's a good idea.
Yeah, on the same post. All right, then, I agree then, because I forgot I was on Cass. I thought it was going to be over further by the museum, so. Well, it is. Isn't it closer?
It's the section of Cass Avenue that would be where the museum is at, so it's that one block, two intersections.
Well, it goes, the honorary sign goes above the green Cass sign, doesn't it?
It will. It's in addition, it's a supplementary designation and the request is we would be marking the traffic signal at Richmond and Dallas Street. It would be East Dallas Street as Cass Avenue would go on a post-mounted similar to the, the other ones.
So it wouldn't conflict with the Muddy Waters sign because it's farther south?
Oh, it wouldn't. I just, I was just saying in general, if they were permanent designations, then the, the next Cass Avenue request would, we'd run out of room on Cass Avenue to do things like this.
First come, first served.
Well, then we could revoke an old one where, so I'm in favor of just leaving it. If people can't figure out where they are, well, you know.
Everybody has GPS now.
I know. I mean, we, we see those honorary road signs all over.
Especially this one. I mean, Greg, that's, that's our, our history. That's.
How come you didn't do the little bricks?
You know, I had, here, I've, well, I don't know how well you know Jimmy, but he always comes up with, you know, a bunch of different ideas. Even the Muddy Waters one has a little bit of, you know, clip-art on it too. So this particular one, there was different, that's a milk bottle, milk, milk jug, I guess.
Or a whiskey jug.
So, you know, there was talk about, because it was a railroad stop, maybe, you know, incorporating railroad tracks on it too. So I can like to see the final design. This is just things we started to play with. And of course, apostrophe yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Looks good. It'll be nice.
So did you decide no time limit or just when it has to go, it has to go?
I like John's idea to just.
Right to revoke. Let's hope we get more people that want to get involved and do something like this, so when that happens, we can worry about it.
Nice problem to have.
Yeah.
That's right.
Anybody else said anything on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is the variance request at 315 South Grant. Board to consider a lot coverage variance request to promote construction of a single-family home at 315 South Grant.
Hi. My client Kathy had actually, well, we're here to request exactly what you just said, a variance from the current zoning of 35% lot coverage to a 40% lot coverage. Last year, my client Kathy had owned a house, looking to move back to the Westmont area where the rest of her family lived. We, at the time, it was actually early in 2010, were looking at a couple lots in the area. And at that time, the lot coverage was 40% for a couple of the lots that we were looking at. One of the required, or a couple of requirements she was looking in the new home was to accommodate a pool for the family parties that are in the area and then also that first-floor master. So at the time, we actually hired an architect to look at exactly what size home she could get to accommodate the 40% lot coverage. We ended up finding this lot. Kathy actually purchased this lot prior to selling her home. Sold her home in 2011, January 2011. Throughout that time period, just back up for one second. The architects, along with talking with the village, Department of Building, found, of course, the 40% regulation. During the time of winter, we were just double-checking, been a couple of months as far as the coverage, just if anything had changed, like some things do with co-enforcements, things of that nature, that we had referenced the website, which was kind of a reference throughout the, the year and referenced it through the months from January to March of this year, still referencing the 40% lot coverage. And when we were actually about to submit for building permits, the surveyor noticed that lot coverage had changed from 35%, or from 40% down to 35%. At that time, we actually redesigned the outside to accommodate some of the building materials, shrunk the patio, shrunk the garage, the driveway, shrunk the house sizes a little bit here, a little bit there. Used the decking material instead of hardscape to accommodate as much as we could to get down to 35%. Couldn't get down to 35%, ended up being at the 40% with the proposed plan that you may have a copy of. And that's where we stand with the request for the variance.
What was it? What was it before you got it down to 40%?
No, it wa, oh, what was it? Different, more or less different materials. So we.
But what was the lot coverage?
The lot coverage? Lot coverage was always 40%.
So it was always 40%?
Yes. The reason why it ended up being, that we ended up coming down is because the lot actually has a little bit of a slope from one side to the other. So a staircase getting down from the deck to the pool could put us over. So that was originally designed to have the hardscape in there and with the additional steps it takes to kind of get down there and have it a little nicer looking than a kind of a narrow step, we would all, you know, we looked for kind of the alternatives.
So it was always 40% lot coverage that you were looking?
We were always shooting, we always said 40%.
The interesting thing about this is we thought we had 40% lot coverage and we changed it to 35, but as I understand, we never did have 40% on the books. Is that correct?
Yes, we do.
Well, for a long time, from what I understood from talking to some other people who've been here for a long time, there was no percentage whatsoever on the home.
But we were, we talked about this.
This is where, this is, this is where this gets really convoluted.
Yes, yes.
There are several issues here, which I've asked the Village Manager prior to the meeting to check into some things dealing with the issue that you have, that you're dealing with. One of the purposes is for us backing it and setting it at 35% was the fact that we are having water issues throughout the entire village. Now, that's not to say that we're not going to grant that, but we need to know what kind of a footprint is going to go on a lot that, because we, we've had people come in here and put 45% lot coverage, 46% lot coverage on what technically should be 40%. Predicated on the lot 60 by 150, depending on the landscaping that you have to do and some of the changes you want to put a pool in, you know. The problem we have is, and we've gone back through the records and everybody has, has searched to find, but we have never, we were never able to find where the lot coverage per se was designated for a number. It was, it was almost like it was, at one point, from what I understand, it was 35 or maybe 30, something between 30 and 35. And then all of a sudden, out of nowhere, comes this 40% number. Now.
We had a lot of discussion at the committee level.
Now Sue and I.
We've been going around about this, trying to figure it out.
We've been on the board for a while and granted, maybe our minds are not as sharp as they used to be, but I don't remember where the 40% came into play, changing to 35. Now, I found in some of the information that original coverage goes back to like in the late 70s, early 80s, that there was a number on the books, but it.
But you understand it's on the books now.
I understand.
I mean, as far as we're.
Okay, but in that being said, in that being said, that it, that it's there now at 35%, okay.
No, it was there at 40%.
Okay. But the question was, when did it, when did it get changed to 40%?
Well, I specifically remember the discussions and it goes back at least eight years ago, I would think. And I don't know that there was a lot coverage prior to that. I believe the discussion was, there should be a lot coverage. We surveyed what some other towns did and we came up with, with 40%. If you want the date of that ordinance, I can, I can get it.
I mean, I'd be real curious because I, you know, I haven't found it. I mean, the other, the other side of this is very simply, I mean, we, the water study's been completed. We know some of the areas that need to be taken care of and things that we're going with. But the other thing was that the reason for us backing down to 35% was to make sure that what's going on a parcel within the town is not going to be, because what was happening is. happening is, we had, we had a 40%, and people were coming, going, well, I want 41, I want 42, I want to push it to 44, and it's kind of like, okay, I can better handle 35%, and you want to push it to 40. Anything above 40%, though, I think the board as a whole would have a major problem with the request. I mean, personally myself, right now, as it sits, I don't have a problem with this, okay? Myself, I do not have a problem with this.
One thing to address, your point is, I agree with you, and ultimately, with the stormwater management practices that are going on, kind of throughout all of the counties, we understand that and respect it. I think what we kind of, you know, as far, part of, I guess, more the confusion on trying to actually, you know, this was, you know, before any lot was purchased, it was a lot of cost in making sure that she could fit what she wanted. We were looking through a couple of different lots, and when we actually purchased that, we were accommodating the 40%.
And that's why, that's why I said, prior to the meeting, I've asked the village manager to investigate that, and just to.
Okay. I understand.
Based on, based on what's in here, what's on the books, we made it, we put on the books 35, so with all the people who wanted to hedge it, we keep it where we wanted it, which was 40. If we put it at 40, it would have been 45. So it's right where it wants, I have no problem with this. It looks like a lovely design, and there's, you've addressed that the stormwater will be channeled, runs to the street or towards the alley, not towards your neighbors. You've got permeable stuff where you can, they've sort, it appears they've discouraged you from using a pool cover, so the rainwater will go in the pool, and I'm not a fan of that. You're going to have ducks and raccoons and everything else swimming in there. But that said, with what's on the books, I think it's a wonderful plan.
I agree. I think it's fine. I have absolutely no problem with it.
I agree as well. I think it looks nice.
No issues from the neighbor?
No, we actually, their biggest concern was just the fact that it's a vacant lot now. They didn't see the plan until the variance meeting, so we actually took time to talk with the neighbors yesterday to confirm, you know, this actually still has to go through the city's engineering and checks with the building department, so, you know, all of that's going to have to meet the drainage requirements for that approval. So I think that was kind of the biggest concern, that they didn't know what was going to be there, because it's an open lot right now.
I'm in favor.
You, too?
Yeah. Did anyone else have anything?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
It will be in for Monday. Shell gas station, 2E 63rd Street. Board to consider ordinances approving the fouling for the Shell gas station property located at 2E 63rd Street. A, limited area groundwater ordinance, and B, limited environmental indemnity agreement.
Good evening. My name is Frank Grenard. I'm an attorney with Johnson &amp; Bell. I have an apology to start with, and that is, the staff geologist, who was going to be here, had a baby about six weeks ago, and she wasn't able to pull herself away from the baby because she's feeding it to be here, so you get a duck in the pond. The second thing I would like to do is to thank the village staff and your attorney. We've been working together for about two years now on this particular project, and I think we finally have gotten to a point where the village attorney has felt comfortable in presenting it to the board for consideration. As you know, there's a Shell gas station at 2E 63rd. In 2008, during a routine site examination, they discovered there had been a release of petroleum product, a very small release, probably from historic overfills where people were filling their car, and it was gas that came out, or perhaps when a tanker truck was putting in gas, that leaked. But as a result of that, they called an incident with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, and they're now in the process of addressing that, foreclosing it, and what they're asking the village to do is to agree that they would enact an ordinance that in a certain area around the station, people could put in water wells. That's a Illinois Pollution Control Board-approved methodology, and the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency is the one that monitors this activity, and they have indicated that if the village were to approve a limited area groundwater ordinance, that they would then, in fact, consider this to be an incident that can be closed. Now, that doesn't mean there's no further responsibility for Shell on the site, it just means there doesn't, you don't have to have further activity on the site in order to address it, but as you know, you have two documents. The one document is a proposed ordinance, and the ordinance that you have is a mandated ordinance. We, this is what the Pollution Control Board says you have to use. The second document is as a result of significant negotiations with Mr. Zamanik, that's a limited environmental indemnity, in which if there is any problem as a result of there being contamination on the site, that Shell Oil Company stands behind whatever that is, in addition to the legal responsibility they have with the EPA. But, for example, if the village is doing something in the roadway, Shell would provide an environmental person to come out and determine whether or not there's any problem with contamination, and if there is, then they would address that on their nickel. But I probably should show you, there are a couple of maps, that I had meant to give copies of them to you, and John said I should do it this way instead. See if that's the best way to do this. If you notice on this map, there are red, the areas that have red lines going to the circle are where there have been readings that are in excess of what's called Tier 1 residential standards. In other words, if someone, no one could eat this, this is a soil map, no one could eat the dirt because of the amount of environmental contamination, it's benzene and MTBE. The area that's impacted is the circle, and around the circle, they did 21 soil borings, and all of the other ones are below Tier 1 residential standards. So any soil contamination is limited to this area. Concurrent with that, they had to do a groundwater analysis, and that's the next chart. This is a little prettier, because it has blue also, but you'll notice, the only area where there's any groundwater involvement that's above Tier 1 drinking standards is in the area with the circle. Now, because there's a small area that's in Cass Avenue, and they haven't sampled in the middle of Cass Avenue, but on the other side, it's below, action levels below Tier 1, somewhere in Cass Avenue is a possibility of there being some additional groundwater involvement. And so, the limited groundwater ordinance we're requesting would prevent people from putting water wells in the area. Now, here's where it gets a little complicated, and I'm sure many of you have heard this before, but the Pollution Control Board, in order to allow a groundwater ordinance to be effective, requires you to model the contamination as if it were a continuing release. In other words, here, there was a discrete contaminant occurrence, where probably from an overfill or whatever, but they say, okay, now, in order for you to use a groundwater ordinance, you have to model an area that would say, if there was a continuing release of petroleum, what would be the maximum extent that it would go to in which people couldn't drink the groundwater? And that's the area that's designated on the chart that you have. If there were a continuing release, which there's not, this would be the maximum area that there would be any impact on potable water supply. And so, in order for a groundwater ordinance to be approved, you have to be able to show that within that area, people won't be exposed to drinking groundwater that might be above Tier 1 residential standards.
Just for a second, with all due respect, if it's only been from, not leaking tanks underneath, but it's been from overflow from cars.
Right.
People putting gas in their cars, or from a delivery truck.
Uh huh.
That doesn't mean that that's not going to happen again in the future. So to say that it couldn't, you know, it ends right now.
I, yeah, you're correct. And that's why this ordinance is only, only addresses the current situation, which is a 2008 IEMA letter. If there is another release that's detected, a new report has to be called in, and that has to be, that has to be addressed separately. So that anytime there's, as you know, the BP station, for example, across the street had a release, too. And it's not an uncommon occurrence for there to be gasolines detected, which then results in an IEMA number. So that this 2008 is based upon the contamination that was discovered at the time, that the assessment was done in 2008.
And how often does they check it?
Well, right now, they check it, they don't do it for assessments like this, but if there's any variation in the amount of gallonage that they have, because they have to do reconciliations daily on the amount of petroleum they purchase, the amount they sold, and if there's any variation, then they have to do an investigation to determine whether or not there's been a release.
When was there a test before, then?
Well, I think that there was a test before this in 1992. It's not, it's not a procedure that's done routinely. It's only done where there's an indication that there might be a release, or in the case of 2008, when they were doing a site investigation in connection with the sale of the particular station.
So how do they determine how it gets worse, if it's getting worse? I don't see it getting any better if it's only from overflow.
Well, it will get better if it's, if it's only from overflow, because eventually, what happens is, over time, the plume, for lack of a better term, that small red area, will fall back on itself.
I think he's talking about additional overflow. That, the plume that's in place now, it's been identified, will eventually degrade, but additional spills, I think, is what you're.
Well, a couple of, a couple of things, since, in the past few years, for example, you all know, because you've gone out and filled your tank, they've got automatic shut-offs now on the, on the handles, and they have the same thing on trucks now. When the trucks fill, they also have an automatic shut-off, so that the accidental overfills that occurred aren't going to occur unless someone is out there holding that handle and trying to fill it when it shouldn't, there should be no more gas going in, and that generally isn't happening, not at $4 a gallon.
Now, what happens when those storage tanks have reached the end of their useful life, and they're going to be dug up, replaced, or, you know, Mr. Mahmood decides he doesn't want to own a Shell gas station anymore and sells the property? What happens when those tanks are, all that soil is disturbed? Is it, is it dug out and the tanks worked on, and then the contaminated soil put back?
No. Has to be mitigated.
Yeah. It's taken out and disposed of as hazmat?
It's got to be mitigated and changed out.
Correct.
First of all, who owns the property?
The property right now, I believe, is owned by Palmyra Properties, Inc., which purchased it from True North Energy, but Shell is still responsible for this release. So that Shell, you know, one of the questions that I was asked is, how do we know that Shell is going to have the financial resources to handle this in the future? And Shell Oil Products is a division of Shell Oil, which is a division of Royal Dutch, and their US assets are $60 billion, and I think they might be able to handle that, plus that doesn't even go into the next two or three layers. So, so they're on the hook for this particular release until there no longer has to be any control. And they're under the IUPA regs, they have to always be responsible for it, under, you know, and as I told Mr. Zamanik, and he knows this, the 800-pound gorilla in the room is the board, because what the board giveth, the board can take it away. So if there's a belief that Shell isn't living up to its obligation, if the ordinance is rescinded, then the EPA comes back in and says, we're reopening the investigation, and you have to go back and continue to address issues.
The ordinance is, simply restates what's already an existing ordinance of the village, which is, you can't have a well for potable water. So I think there's a common ordinance in this sort of situation, and I don't have a problem with the ordinance. We got the additional protection of the indemnity agreement, because although the village does not own or control the right-of-way at Cass and 63rd, that's county, the village does, through an agreement with the county, maintain the sidewalk. So if we're to do sidewalk work that could involve removal of soil, then we'd go to Shell and say, okay, we need to do testing, and if there is soil removal of contaminated soil, then they would take care of that at their expense.
And this is, this is, in fact, a recognized methodology. There are 200 communities, and right now, they have groundwater ordinances of one type or another, and so far, no one has been burned by it. And here, you have the additional protection, which many don't, which is in the environmental indemnity, because many cities don't ask for it, because they know that at the end of the day, if something untoward occurs, they can then say, the ordinance goes away.
And I passed out an email that Mr. Grenard responded to with some additional questions I have that I thought were informative, so hopefully that helps clarify some questions you may have.
So I also apologize for my cold. I know I sound like a frog, but that came on suddenly last night, and I said I would still tough it out and not make her bring the baby in. Any other questions?
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, too? No? Okay, thank you very much. Next is the conceptual discussion, 233 West 63rd Street. Board to consider requests for a revised concept for the retail storefronts in front of the Westmont Yard, 233 West 63rd Street.
Hello. Hopefully the man in the back, here he comes. Mr. Guest. I'll get started, you guys are busy, so I'll get started while he's doing that. My name is Bill Guest, oh, sorry. That could be embarrassing, huh? Does it say, like, most recently created?
Family pictures.
Sort by date modified.
And then, it wants to.
Oh, the wrong picture or something.
Emily Anderson.
All right, well, I'll have to wing it, I guess, huh? Okay, well, that didn't go as planned, did it?
Oh, I guess he's not going to do it.
All right, sorry. Okay, my name is Bill Guest, and I'm over at Westmont Yard at 233 West 63rd Street. And I am here because Fred asked, we're giving an update of what is going on at Westmont Yard, or what our plans are for the future, for the retail area, just to get some people up to speed. I think we put in place the sports fields, and we had the retail area, and we hadn't developed that yet, and now we're thinking about developing it, so we just wanted to update you on the plan. So I thought I'd spend just a couple of minutes going through what has gone on there, what we've learned, and then what the plan is. Can we make this magic machine go on? This didn't print well, that's why I was going to do it on the computer, but whatever, we'll just go for it. Yeah, part of it is, it's just pictures out of focus. Oh, that's good. So there it is, that's the building at Westmont Yard. And here, I just wanted to give you, oh, look at that, okay, just what has gone on since I was last here, maybe a year ago, what we've accomplished. So we got the fields up, so that's good news. We've done our leagues, we've started our training, we have Mighty Tykes, which we've developed, which is a child soccer development program for two- to five-year-olds. We have Active Childcare, which is up on the second floor, is preschool and daycare. We're up to 30 kids, 35 kids, I think, there. We've created over-the-top birthdays, which are birthday parties that we do on the fields, and a little bit in the front area that you saw. We have Sidelines, which is our concessions restaurant, where we have pizza, hot dogs, popcorn, a bunch of other stuff. The Playroom, which is where we've put some, kind of, what happened with the front area is, we were going to wait to do it, and everybody kept coming by and saying, when are you going to be open? Because when you drive by, all you can see is the front area, and that was just concrete. So I ran around, you guys were nice enough to give a one-year, I don't know, probation or something, and we put down the carpet, the astroturf, and put the inflatables up, and created this playroom. And we've had a ton of people that have come at that, and then we've just started an after-school sports program, where, as part of our daycare, where it's an after-school program, where we pick people up at the schools, and they come and do sports. So that is, and very quick, what's going on. We've partnered with a bunch of training partners for this. We use professional trainers for most everything we do, UK international soccer camps for soccer, they, they bring over people from the UK, they do AYSO training nationwide. They're young guys, they're great with the kids. They also do our Mighty Tykes. We have New Wave Lacrosse, which is based out of Naperville, and they're growing, they're in Plainfield, great guys. They do our lacrosse, Around the Horn Baseball, which is Isaac Valdez, who used to be a scout for the Sox, he does lessons and classes. Steve Gregory from the Quarterback Farm, and then Reball, we work with them, and Reball's indoor paintball, paintless paintball, little foam balls that you shoot at each other. And I keep trying to get the fire department to verse the police department in Reball. to verse the police department in Reball.
They wouldn't even do the chili cook-off, are you kidding me?
Because the fire department comes at least once a week, which is awesome. They're great. They scare the living bejesus out of everybody when they come because they think there's some sort of fire going on. But they're great to have. They've toured the building. So this is just, I guess, filling in where Larry was talking about. We have brought a ton of people into Westmont. And maybe we label them as tourists, local tourists. But they've come from Hinsdale, Western Springs, Bowling Brook, Woodbridge, Naperville, Lamont, Elmhurst. And they've come as far as New Lennox, which I'm not entirely sure where that is. And it's from downtown Chicago. So they're coming from all over to do the leagues. They come to Westmont. We haven't done any surveys. It's exactly what they do. I know they do go to the Harvest Restaurant down the street. But hopefully, they're doing things here. But it has brought Westmont onto the map. I can't tell you how many times people have said, "I had no idea that anything was here." It's like, "I didn't either until I got here." So that is sort of where we've gotten now, what we came to talk about, the plan. So the green is green for the existing soccer field. So this is sort of the front area. And then what this part here is the retail area. And what we, I guess, would like to do is turn it, the entire front area, into an activity restaurant. I don't know what the buzzword is for it. But it's, I hate to use the words like a McDonald's with a playland, but it's the same idea. Where this part on the west side, the west two bays, would be the seating area and the cooking area of the restaurant. And then the red part would be a play area. So that they could overlook and do play area. And then we have here a couple of private rooms where we could do birthday parties that would overlook the field. So families could come, have a burger, and then have their children play, either in the play area or over on the fields. They can also, you know, obviously, it ties in with all the leagues and everything we're doing. They come and have a burger before and after the leagues. But we hope also that it just becomes its own attraction in that it's this active restaurant. So that is the idea and why I'm here, to talk. The concept, we're looking at a couple of concepts, but just to give one of them is Canyon's Restaurant. And it's a burger restaurant. It's a quick-service restaurant. It's similar to Five Guys, Burgers and Fries, Mo's Restaurant. Willowbrook just put one in, Meatheads, which is a local one that's got them. This is in that same market. It's called Quick Service Casual. So you go up, you order your burger, you go, and then they give it to you. You take it to the table and eat. And, you know, basically five buck burgers. But it fits in well with what we're doing. It's healthier as far as, you know, burgers can be healthy. But it's a healthier burger. They also have mushroom, like portobello burgers and a vegetarian burger. And it also fits into an active lifestyle. So their model is eat well, play hard, live fresh. So it fits into what we're trying to do. There's none in Illinois, but we think it fits for what we're trying to do. It's a healthy angle and fits into this whole active part of it. And then, this is bad pictures. This is where the pictures go. That's, probably looks a little crazy. That's a person saying, "That's just a mountain bike mounted on the wall." There's nobody, there's no crazy, extreme sports there. But then what we want to try and do is, so we have the restaurant. And I came earlier this year for a liquor license and we were going to do it. We have another restaurant in the building already, Sidelines. It's a concessions. It's over on the east side of the building. And we were trying to get a liquor license for that. And we didn't fit into the right category. And I never came back because I figured I would just wait and do this. And I think what the broader plan is, to put this restaurant in and get a liquor license for the facility so we could serve beer or wine here, or liquor, depending on which one we get. And also do it over at the Sidelines Restaurants. What's cool about the Sidelines is it opens up... I don't have the right pictures here. But if you, it's on the east side of the building, which faces Bella Reeve Park. And the doors open up and there's a patio there. So we can put outside seating there in the summertime. And it overlooks the park. It's also, that part of the parking lot, we've gated off with gate, well, with a fence. So it can also become a beer garden. Why it's fenced off, and this part, it sounds a little funky on the cover. It's in the, during the day, it's the daycare playground. So that, in the summertime. But then the kids go. And so at night, it can sort of convert into an area, an outdoor eating area slash, I don't want to call it beer garden. Because I don't know how much, you know, it's not like it'd be a big drink fest. But people, they have beer, wine, or drinks with food. And it's nice because it's tucked back in there. It overlooks the park. It's not, a lot of these outside concepts are right on a parking lot or overlooking the major road. That's the overall idea. And then hopefully, after that, we'll put in a retail concept. But I think we'll do that in the existing promenade area. When you look at the traffic, it just fits better where we do it in the back of the promenade or we make it part of the concessions area. I don't know that it'll be any huge retail, but we'd like to do a sports-related retail with lacrosse gear, soccer gear, and shirts and jerseys. But I just think, we have literally, I don't know if anybody's been there on the weekend, but there's 500 people going through there a day. And we just need to get them in that area. So that's the broader picture of what we would like to do. So I'm not, I don't know if I have an actual ask or I wanted to give you an update and I'd...
Your honor, the reason we asked Mr. Gahst to come tonight is this is a little bit of a departure from the originally approved concept plan that the village board blessed. And, you know, I think we were talking about four or five retail spaces. Since he now wants to use this as his own operation, we just wanted him to come see if the village board was comfortable with this before he goes off in this direction.
Mr. Gahst, you are consistently our most energetic business owner. It's mine. And I must say, I watch, you know, the sign and a lot of my friends' kids from all over come there for soccer and lacrosse. And, you know, they consistently tell me what's going on. And if you could find it in your heart to stay open till about 2:00 in the morning so that my spazo Jack Russells will stop banking off my furniture in my living room and I could just bring them over there and say, "Go."
Have a run, yeah.
But any rate, you are doing a phenomenal job. I am extremely proud of your business. I am extremely proud of the risks that you took. And it's about time that you're reaping those rewards. It is a good thing. If what you want to do is put in a Canyon's and a play area...
I've added, yeah. I think it's a wonderful idea.
That's a great idea.
How many people do you employ right now?
That's a good question. Directly 30.
Okay. And would you be adding staff with this? Or would you be able...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So even more jobs to Westmont than you already brought?
Right, right, right. Yeah, we have 30 now. And that doesn't include the, I don't count in that all of the training people that we bring in that do the training. Those people make a lot, too, so... Yeah.
It's a beautiful facility. And, you know, I've been through it a couple of times now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I, you know, the daycare, it's just, it's incredible. And I think this is a wonderful idea. And to have that added exposure from 63rd Street will only help you. And again, this is something that's year-round.
Right. And that's what I think, right?
Some of your things are more seasonal.
Yes.
You know, so this can only...
This is what I think will be good. And I guess I forgot to mention a couple of things. One, I hope to, once we get the restaurant in, put in a breakfast concept, like partner with a bagel company, Korean American Bagel, or something like that, where they could come in during the day. Because we have with this playroom, these just inflatables that I threw up just to get it going. I mean, we have a ton of people that come in during the day.
At a Caribou or a Starbucks, or...
Yeah, or something like that, yeah. Those, our problem is, those are right down the road and another darn village. But they're right over at 83 and 63, the Caribous, I guess.
That's okay. So if you want to do this, we can have one.
But we would like to put in a breakfast concept there, too, as a cafe, and then to help that build us out. And then what we can use that the play area for during the day is our, sort of our 0- to 3 classes. We have the Mighty Tykes, where we focused on soccer for 2- to 6. But we need to add, especially in conjunction with our preschool daycare, the 0- to 3, the Mom and Me classes, like the jamboree-type classes, which we can use that area for. And then hopefully, they stay and play and they use the cafe part of it. So that's what we're trying to build. And everything's kind of a fit and hand-in-glove, hopefully.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
You know, honestly, you know, with the enthusiasm that he has here, whatever, have you ever thought about possibly franchising a Jimmy John's?
Oh, that quick food, quick? No, I had not, no.
I mean, that's about the speed that you're running here. It's like, you know, it's like, okay.
How's your numbers for business-wise? I mean, are you happy where you're at right now? Is this, I mean, no one's ever really happy. But I mean, to the point with the economy the way it is, that...
Yeah, it's going, well, I think people come by and they're like, "Oh, my God, you're hitting the cover off the ball." I'm like, "Well, okay, come now. You think I'd bankrupt?" But, no, I think we're building it out. I think we took a strategy, that's a long-term strategy. A lot of these things, as you saw, the brands, we're building it ourselves. And we're building it internally. We could have done better had we just been a land... There's a couple of models with this, where we could have just been a landlord, built this thing, and then had somebody else run our leagues, have somebody else run our programs. And we probably would have done better this year financially. But then if somebody builds something somewhere else, they just take the business and go. As to my knowledge, it's not a great business. It's why most of these end up, after a couple of years, being owned publicly. They revert to public entities. So we've taken the time to build these. We run all our own leagues. We run all our own training. And they're growing. I think they're growing. I can't, we had another eight people in today that said, "Oh, God, we've never heard of this place. We've never been to this part of town." And we haven't done any advertising. It's all been word of mouth. So we didn't want to, we didn't want to have, you know, 5,000 people come and say that place was kind of disorganized and they don't really... We'd rather have 1,000 people come and say, "Wow," and tell people. And so now, we're just to the point where we can start to market it. We hit heavily the clubs and all the people doing the leagues. Now we need to start hitting, we're going to go into Vow Pack for our first time next month. But hit the individuals for the individual programs, the Mighty Tykes classes, the child development classes and that. So that's the plan. But so, I don't know if I answered great. It was okay. It was your standard first year. I was absolutely convinced, the model for this business is you lose money the first year, you break even the second year, and you make money in the third year. And I was absolutely convinced that I had it wired that we would be right in year three and year one. And we weren't, but that's okay. We were probably right near year two. We didn't quite break even, but we did all right. So, and I think we have the platform to do well next year.
Good for you.
Good.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you, thanks. Thanks so much for all your support.
This was approved as a planned development. I'll have to check the language, which I didn't do until I heard the presentation about some of the retail restrictions for the retail space.
Oh, yes.
Percentage that had to be leased for retail, et cetera. So it may require an amendment to the planned development agreement. Some amendments can be done administratively and some have to actually go through the public hearing process. So, timing-wise, I'll be in touch with you, Bill.
Okay.
And we can talk about whether this needs to be scheduled. If so, we're looking at, you know, a month-plus delay before it officially gets approved.
We're counting the whole, and I don't know how, you're the expert on that. But we're counting the whole thing as a restaurant, like a McDonald's would count the whole thing as a restaurant, even though it has a play. I don't know if that's right or wrong. I just went for it, but...
Any arcades, arcade type?
Yeah, we're going to do a ton of arcades because I heard the board's really up, you know, geared up about that. And it's going to be, I didn't mention the liquor license, it's going to be like a whiskey shots bar. It'll be crazy. No, sorry. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, no, no, there's no, 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 there's no arcade games.
It's the first time I heard that there's a daycare facility. Is that independently run by a company? Or is that like, can you describe that?
Sure, yes. To answer the ownership question, we own it. It's not independently owned. We own everything that's in there. It is a fully licensed preschool and daycare.
Can't have liquor within so many feet of the daycare.
Yeah, we checked that. But I think it's, it worked okay. No, I went and looked at the, yeah. Was that too technical for you? I didn't mean to really go technical.
Would they make a difference if they were closed, the kids weren't in there for the daycare center? It was closed at that time?
If it's closed at night...
It said the liquor would only start at 5:00 p.m.
I think we're exempt from that. It's not, it's within 100 feet of, you know, and I'm not prepared. I checked this and I believed, not that I wouldn't, but that we could do it. But I'll go through the code again and look. Because you're right, there are some regs around that.
Chief is standing behind you.
Yeah, careful the chief.
Oh, just everywhere. Because we did check this, that's when I checked it originally, for the liquor license. That's where the code was. Oh, here, let the expert do it.
I don't mean to, I don't, I don't mean to rain on the parade, but I, the same concern, it was, I believe, at 100 feet and if it was building the building, if it's in the same building, if it's licensed by Department of Children and Family Services, there may be a problem. I'd have to research that and I can do that and get back to you tomorrow. What I did want to know is that when you applied for your previous liquor license, you had conversations with the mayor. My concern is, when you have the liquor in the restaurant, are you going to, are you anticipating letting people go and have a beer and then go sit and watch a game in the stands or be able to walk around with the beer? Because that would not be permitted. And I don't know if that was your plans.
The restaurant will be fine because that's segregated off. If you had it in the concessions, it's open. Yeah, I guess, yes.
You can't. You can't. And I-- well, you can, but I guess the mayor's-- in my conversations with the mayor and his expressed wishes is that is something that he would not be in favor of, to put it that way. Just so you understand, the mayor has everything to do with liquor. He can either approve or deny the license. It's with the board's recommendation as well, but he has the final say. So--
Right.
My conversations with him is that, as we talked, I think, on the phone or through emails.
Right.
If the liquor is restricted to the restaurant and the restaurant confines itself, then under a liquor license under a restaurant, they would be allowed to have that provided as a personal or regular class. What we applied for before, they applied for before, was for something of a health club or a health facility, which did not fit. And the plans at that time were to be able to, at the sidelines probably, walk up, have a beer, go back and sit and watch a couple soccer games and drink some beers.
Which is what they do with the Westmont Fitness Center.
Fitness Center is a health club. Yours didn't really fit the definition.
But I mean, just as a concept, you can go there and buy. Now, maybe racquetball games don't get us crazy excited by people.
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, if you have some-- I've-- my daughter played soccer and you do have some heated parents, I believe, every once in a while. But that was the mayor-- if the liquor was, you know, restricted to the restaurant, I know that was the mayor's preference in this. Keeping liquor to the restaurant, fine. That's under the restaurant license. Once it starts leaving that, that would be the same as saying, "Okay, I'm going to go to a local bar in town, and now I'm just going to go walk across the street and do something else." You can't leave that premise with the liquor. It has to stay on that property. So, that's something we should probably discuss as well, too. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Gunther can speak to you. But I just want to make sure that where if you're planning on letting the alcohol leave the confines of the restaurant, that would be a problem.
Okay.
I think the owner loses some of the control at that point. With minors in the building, you don't have enough people around there just to police it.
Right.
And can I suggest, that's probably a deeper discussion for another night. It's a little premature at this point.
Okay. I have a question I just have to ask, though, because with the daycare, were we in violation of our own ordinance when we had the Harvest Festival there?
Remember liquor?
That's why we looked at-- well, I don't think the daycare was in the building. I'm not 100% sure. I know we looked at it. There's a difference. That's what I'm saying.
I mean, were they not open?
No, when we looked at this before--
They weren't open.
I think the daycare issue was neutral. I have to go back and look, but I do believe because right next door is Children's World, or there's a daycare right next to you, and your property adjoins. And that's why I believe there was something in our regulation that permitted it. However, this is in the same building, and that's a little bit different. I remember that because there was. When they applied or when you applied for this before, we looked at it and there was-- it was possible. But I just want to make sure that you're aware that, you know, the alcohol, the mayor's preference was not to have it be walking around the facility.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Being able to take and walk around the facility.
That would make sense.
So, you get stuff to look at. Yeah.
Yeah. So, what are we going to do with this then?
Well, I'm going to work with Mr. Gus to do a planned development amendment, which is going to be required because now that I hear about the daycare, it's not even a permitted or special use in the C1 district.
Right.
And it wasn't part of the original approvals. With PD, of course, you've got flexibility to approve incongruent uses, so we can work that in. I suggest that I'll work with staff and Mr. Gus on that.
John, I think at the staff level, we consider that to be an auxiliary use that was in concert with the main theme of the soccer field and everything.
Because it's, yeah, sports-related. I mean, because it's active childcare and they're downusing the field. They're kind of integral to what--
Aside from that, then, for Monday night, it can still be on the agenda for the restaurant.
The front of the bill, yeah.
Right. And then you have other issues that'll come up later.
If you'd like it for conceptual approval for Monday, sure.
Motion.
Okay.
Definitely. So, we can still go ahead with it for Monday, then?
If you would like, sure.
And I-- again, I will research, too, and we'll have an answer for the liquor thing by Monday.
John will be on the day.
I can have that for Monday as well.
Excellent.
Doing ordinance? Are we doing ordinance or just a motion, right?
Just a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, then I believe that on--
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm going to-- I'm not being rude. I'm going to go back to work, so I'm leaving. I have to go help him close. All right. All right, thanks.
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 Next on the agenda, final plat request, the Standard Market Board to consider a final plat of the subdivision request from West Highland Capital Partners for the Standard Market, 333 East Agden Avenue.
Good evening. The engineering review process for Standard Market is complete, and just as a matter of formality, we do have to bring the final plat before you for review and approval. The petitioner is also with me, Vince Priest from West Highland Capital Partners. We all have been past the site and know that it's going great guns out there. We've got structural steel up and the underground detention is, I believe, completed. But he's here as well to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a preliminary question. Is it now going to be called Standard Market?
It is.
No longer Westmont Market?
It was never-- that was a foreplacement only from the beginning.
Oh, okay.
It was FPO on everything that was submitted.
Is the underground finished? All covered up already?
The stone is on there. Then they got to put clay, and then they put some more stone and then binder and asphalt.
It's moving so fast. Yep. I mean, I look at that Infinity dealership. It seems like it's at a standstill, and you guys are just going bam, bam, bam.
I'm really happy with the general.
It's great. Great.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for him on?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming in.
We have a first.
I guess we're going to have it on Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. Next is the final plat request for Sally's subdivision for to consider a request from the American Chartered Bank for the fouling, A, final plat of subdivision approval, and B, right-of-way dedication approval.
Well, with this particular project, we took a less direct route, unfortunately, with the economy. You'll probably remember back in 2005, Mike Sally, the original property owner, received approval on a subdivision for a four-lot subdivision at that location. And some of the complications there were the fact that that 56th Street and Hidden View Drive didn't connect at that point. Mr. Sally had elected to wait for the village to make those improvements. However, it wasn't until this current budget year that we were able to initiate that work. So, in the interim period, the property entered foreclosure, and Joe-- correct me if I'm wrong. Is it Plam?
Plam.
Plam, I'm sorry. Joe is with us this evening from American Chartered. They've received the property, and the final engineering review here is also complete. In order to sell these lots individually, the final plat does need to be recorded so that new PIN numbers can be issued.
My only question, Shannon. The dedication is contained within the plat of subdivision.
Right.
It's a single document, and we have it broken down into two approvals, A and B. With your permission, I would like to combine those on the agenda to a single approval and a single ordinance because it's all within the same document.
That's fine.
So, is it no longer going to be called the Sally's subdivision?
Correct.
Good.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, construction engineering service agreement for federal participation CMAC project. Request for approval of construction phase three engineering services agreement for the 2008 CMAC sidewalk and 60th Street Culver project.
The phase three engineering is the construction inspection services, so you've already-- well, actually, this project has recently gone out to bid. So, the construction contract, because of the IDOT being the granting authority, the award of the contract will actually be done by the Illinois Department of Transportation. So, we're waiting for that to transpire. Burns &amp; McDonald is the engineer that did the design work, and this is their agreement to do the, what's called, phase three engineering or construction inspection for the same That's it. It's that simple.
The whole is good.
Other questions?
No.
Questions from the attorney?
Nope.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda, then, is closure of Cass Avenue for Memorial Day Parade. Board to consider approval of closure of Cass Ave from Naperville Road to 55th Street for the annual Memorial Day Parade.
It's pretty routine.
Same as every year's in the past, Memorial Day Parade on Memorial Day with the memorial service afterwards. Nothing special, no changes. We are working with the Park District, American Legion, and everybody to get it done. Thank you.
Good. It's going to be from what, Chicago to--
Yes, Naperville Road to Richmond to Memorial Park, where the memorial service will be held immediately afterwards.
Okay.
Starting at 10:30.
I think-- yeah, I think they start grouping around 10 to kick off around 10:30 as usual. Okay. Anybody else have any?
Nope.
Nope. Thank you. 12. Water rate analysis for 2012. Wow. Board to consider approval of a pass-through water rate increase of 31 cents per 1,000 gallons for all customers effective the usage measured after the mid-June routine meter reading.
Yes. At the last Public Works Committee meeting, you all received what would be a much longer version of this same presentation with more details about the water rate analysis that we did, both with respect to, you know, where our asset rates are today, how we're performing, you know, against our revenues, as well as changes in the DuPage Water Commission, who we purchased the water from and their adjustments. And then with that, the analysis, you heard information regarding our future needs and how those are to be funded as well. So, tonight, at your request, we're going to go back through the same information, but kind of more of an overview and lump the categories together. And certainly, when we get to the end, we can go back and revisit anything you want to talk about in more detail. But Mike is here to, you know, go back through the information regarding our water rates.
Thank you for allowing me to come back and revisit this one more time. Our first slide is going to review-- it's from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources rate study they did. I picked the towns that kind of border Westmont, and you can see currently with our study from 2010, we are the low-- we have the lowest water rate for all the towns that border us. Now, out of the 196 water companies that were surveyed, you can see Chicago was the lowest, and Delmar Woods was the highest at 1385. So, you can see, we're pretty low on the scale of the water rate, the water rate study that they had done. The next slide gives you kind of a better view of that because you can't always just go by what the water rate is. You also got to kind of figure out what the fixed cost is a lot of times for different towns. And you can see, again, we're right in the middle right now, middle to the bottom of-- if you combine our water rate and our fixed cost, get the total cost, we're right around where everybody else is around us. But there are some towns that are a little bit higher than us, you know, that border us. But currently, we're middle or lower half. I-- DuPage Water Commission, their water rates, they're looking into raising their rates over the next three to five years, 15%. And we purchase our water from DuPage Water Commission, and obviously, they get their water from the city of Chicago. So, we're kind of at the mercy of them because they set the rates. As you can see here, from currently, our water rate right now is $1.98 per 1,000 gallons. Next year, which is our next fiscal year, is going to be 229. So, if we do nothing, obviously, you know, if we don't pass any kind of increase, we're going to start losing revenue. And you can see, the next three years, they're proposing a 15% increase, and it's going to continually keep going up each year. The history of our DuPage Water Commission water rate, you can see right here, it's increasingly going up pretty quickly. There was one year there, they lowered the rate, but as you can see, the first column there, the O&M cost is really increasingly going up each year. Fixed cost stays pretty much steady in the total cost, and you can see that, again, on this next graph. We can see where the fixed cost stays pretty steady, but the O&M costs are increasingly going up, and it's also going to increase our total cost. This next slide shows what we bought over the last three or four years and what we sold the water for and the difference, the net difference between the two. And you can see, back in 2007, our net difference was a little over $2 million, where you could see this past year, it's under $2 million. So, we're slowly increasingly going down. If we do increase our water rate, you can see, if we increase it by $1.60, which is what I'm proposing, you can see our net difference, we can increase it by $3 million each year. And if we just continually pass through what their increases that City of Chicago, DuPage Water Commission are asking for, we will still continually make a net profit. If we don't, you're going to see, we're going to start losing money as far as covering our O&M costs. And here's a graph showing that. Right now, what we sold it for is pretty consistent. We sell our waters, you know, it's always right around $3 million, $3.5 million dollars with the money we make from selling our water. Where what we buy it for is, you can see in the blue line, it's increasingly going up. So, our net profit, obviously, is going to keep going down if we don't do anything to increase the-- our rate. So, the big question is, what should we be charging our customers? Keeping up with costs, a plan for future costs is a big thing. Water purchase, infrastructure replacement, expansion needs, these are all things that we need to look at when we're going to decide what our rate should be. So, I sat down with Steve, and we sat down, did a rate analysis of what we're going to need for the next 15 years. The first thing that we looked at is water main replacement costs. If we want to replace all the water mains that's planning on, that have the life expectancy of 70 to 80 years, this is what we'd have to replace. 4-inch, 6-inch, 8-inch, 10-inch water main, it's all cast iron. You can see the total cost, if we wanted to replace all that, that's going to eventually fail. It's going to cost almost $18 million, which you really can't see on the screen here. I'm sorry. The screen needs to be a little smaller. But it is, take my word for it, it's $18 million, just under $18 million. So, then there's other capital improvements we need to do also. We need to replace Central Tower eventually. Right now, the life expectancy of Central Tower was 50 years. Currently, Central Tower is 53 years old. So, we're already three years past its life expectancy. Now, Central Tower is in great shape, but that doesn't mean in the next 10, 15 years, we're not going to have some problems with this tower. So, we need to plan ahead to replace that tower. South Tower, there's some maintenance that needs to be done on South Tower. The main maintenance still is painting. Within the next five to 10 years, that tank is going to need to be painted. That's, you know, that's a huge cost. Also, DuPage Water Commission and EPA have certain guidelines. They require you to have at least two days worth of storage in case, for some reason, City of Chicago and DuPage Water Commission couldn't supply us with water. So, there was a power outage or something. Well, now they have generation. But if there's some other kind of catastrophe, we would-- we're required to keep at least two days with the storage. Currently, we have 4.5 million gallons worth of storage. That's if our system's completely full, which never completely is full. Our normal storage day is right around 4 million gallons, but our average daily use is between 2.4 and 2.7 million gallons. So, we need at least 5.5 million gallons of the storage. So, to meet that need, we would need to construct another tower. I'm proposing somewhere on the north side of town that we would have a tower on the north side of town, one in the central part of town, one on the south part of town. Another big part of this program is water replacement program. It's been 15 years since we've done a water, a complete water meter replacement program. And there's three types of meters that need to be replaced that are on a 15-year cycle. The first one is 5/8 meters. And you can see, the total cost to replace all those meters is 2 point-- just under $2.2 million. The next is 1-inch meters. Total cost to replace that would be, including labor, would be just under a quarter of a million dollars. And then finally, the last one is inch and a half meter, which is about $300,000 to replace all those. So, the total cost to replace those three types of meters that we have in our town is $2.7 million. The nice thing about the new type of meter we'll be installing, it's guaranteed for 20 years. So, those meters should last us, as they say, 20 years. So, we wouldn't have to replace these meters for 20 years. Now, again, going back to the original question, what should our water rate be? If we decide to do all these improvements, which I feel like we need, we're going to need to come up with almost $28 million over the next 15 years. That works out to be just under $1.9 million per year. And if the City of Chicago and DuPage Water Commission are planning on increasing their water rates, again, between 5 and 15% over the next five years, once you factor in all these costs, what should our water rate be and what would it look like for the next 15 years? The first year, which would be the next fiscal year, our water rate, if we wanted to do this, would be $5.7-- or $5.76 per 1,000 gallons. That does not include the 31-cent pass-through that we just asked for in the-- that Steve had brought up a few minutes ago. Then, every year after that, we would just increase it by what DuPage Water Commission is proposing they're going to increase by. So, you can see, for the next five years, ultimately, down at the bottom would be $6.96. And then after that, if they decide not to increase their water rates and say everything comes back to the same, we could keep it at that level for hopefully the following 10 years. We can see the residential rate would be $1 less than the commercial rate. I did a study, went around and called all the towns around this area to see what their average water bill is right now per town. And you can see right now, based on 15,000 gallons per month, right now, there's-- we're the sixth on the level of all the municipalities that receive water from DuPage County. What I'm proposing is they're going to drop us down, obviously down a little bit lower. But you got to remember that all these municipalities are looking to increase their water rates because they're going to lose revenue also by, with the DuPage Water Commission increasing their rates. So, all these towns are looking to do something. I'm not saying they're all going to, but I got to, you know, from what I've heard, most of them are looking into doing something. And then here, another graphic shows what our average monthly bill is right now. Like I said, we're down towards the bottom. Ultimately, we're going to be, I think, when it's all said and done, we're going to be somewhere in the middle. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
I'd sure like being down at the bottom on this.
Yeah.
Put the agenda item together, and the only specific thing requested in it for sure is the 31-cent pass-through, which actually went into effect the beginning of this month. The rest of it is the rate analysis we did for, you know, to forecast our future needs. And I guess it's, you know, a two-part request. Staff is recommending that that be considered. But at a minimum, and at a minimum, I don't want to say immediately, but that 31-cent pass-through should be acted on sooner than later.
Right.
Immediately, but effective with, what, mid-June billing?
Right. We would have to-- well, the June reading and then the subsequent billing after that. Mid-June reading.
Right. So, is it something that should be on the agenda for Monday with the pass-through rate increase and then discussed ASAP at Public Works? I mean, we talked about this and we saw this before, but come up with something to put on the agenda as far as an additional increase to cover what will amount to capital expenses?
Mm-hmm.
Do we need another discussion, or can we put it on the agenda?
I think we've talked about it. I think what's going to happen is, I think, we're going to have to put it on the agenda and try to figure out exactly what number we're going to be talking about here. Because otherwise, we're going to end up with mains breaking all over this town.
Right.
And the other thing I would like to say also, that a lot of towns and villages go outside to have this kind of work done. And Mike Ramsey did all of this work in-house, did all this research in-house, and saved this village approximately $15,000 in doing this all in-house.
Right.
So, I want to applaud the water department in that particular fashion. But the unfortunate thing is, again, I have to hearken to the fact that other taxing bodies and other bodies that are providing services to our residents because they couldn't keep their house in order and they couldn't take care of their own internal workings is now going to affect the residents in this village. And the unfortunate part of that is that we can't get around that. We only have, I believe, two wells still in play, but we would not meet the proper coding in that because I'm sure someone may say, "Well, why don't we go back to our own wells?" Well, we can't, based on today's standards and that for water and that. Those are backup wells. If something were to happen with the water supply from Chicago, we could enact them for a short period of time, but as a daily running thing, we would not be able to do that.
So, can we just put this on the next committee of the whole agenda to talk about an additional increase to--
I think we have to.
Save for what's coming down the road.
Yep.
Rather than do it at committee. Let's just get it on an agenda.
I think we might as well. Let's just get it. Let's get it on the agenda.
I don't think there's much to talk about.
No.
We know what we have to do.
Got to do.
We do, but the public has to know what we-- why we're going to do it. Next, one of the issues is how we're going to handle an education campaign.
Yep.
So, they understand what we're going to do, why we're going to do it.
This would be the perfect.
I've been trying to tell people from the police academies and fire to watch today's
meeting because it would be an eye-opener on our water bill.
Right.
I did notice some here. I didn't know if anybody had anything to say, if they wanted to come to the podium. I didn't know if anybody--
Well, plus, on the agenda is only the pass-through.
Right, right. So--
So, we don't have anything else on the agenda.
Right, the pass-through is here, but so we'll discuss it further, then?
Yep.
I have a question on the water tower on 55th Street, then, because you had said something that, right now, the pump wasn't working, so we're only being fed by gravity.
No, the-- there's an altitude valve that you can control. If we had all three-- if we had three towers, we'd have to control those altitude valves would have to work so we can fill the tanks at different-- because there's different elevations. And right now, that valve not working, that would just be fed in gravity. So, what would happen is, that tank would fill up right away, and we wouldn't get the other two tanks filled properly. So, all those valves have to work so we could shut a valve off, fill up the other towers as we went. towers as we went.
The valve helps you simulate different altitudes, so that you can push water into different.
Well, I was just wondering how fast, I mean, obviously, you don't wanna go through the cost of fixing it, so how, is that kind of like a priority? Is it necessary to get it?
It would only be a priority right now is if we built North Tower, then it would definitely be a priority. We would have to, there's a certain criteria that Spencer, our finance director, asked me to do, is come down with the criteria, and I gave him a list today of what, you know, what order things would have to get done. And we would have to, obviously, build the new Central Tower first, before we even considered building the North Tower.
Because it will affect it then, when the North one would go in.
Exactly.
But for now, until that happens, it's functioning and doing.
Yeah, oh yeah, it works fine, yeah. I mean, it's just, it's just getting old, and there's gonna be, it's gonna come a time where it's not gonna function properly, and I'm just.
No problem for the fire hydrants?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just the recycling of our storage.
Mike, just to clarify, for the people who are watching at home, the one slide that you had right after the piggy bank with the water main replacement cost, you have the 70 to 80-year life. Now, these cast iron pipes are at the end of that 70, 80-year life, correct?
That's correct. All the cast iron water main we have in town was installed either between 1930 and 1950, basically. Newfield Manor is the oldest section, I mean, not the oldest, but it's the newest of the old cast iron. They were installed in 1950s. Everything else is before that.
And you replace it now, new pipe is PVC, correct?
That is correct.
Right, okay. What's the, what's the estimated lifespan of PVC pipe?
I'll be honest with you, nobody really knows. They buried it. Amaco or BP was one of the first companies to come up with that idea, and they buried it, and they had some kind of time, I don't know how they did it, but the time elapsed, they tried to figure out how long it would last, and they got 80, 90, 100 years out of it.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it's gonna happen, it's simulated, I think.
Yeah.
Let's try it.
Okay.
But, you know, that's, that was a study. We started installing PVC in the late 60s, early 70s.
And we have not one water main break.
No main breaks. Forty years, we've had a water main break in PVC.
Well, no, from a failure.
From a failure.
Then hit.
Yeah, well, contract.
It's a little different, yeah.
A little different when somebody does it.
Exactly.
But now, in this line of attack, is it cheaper to repair the PVC than it is the cast iron?
Really, there's, there's not much of a difference in the cost of repairing it, because you still repair it the same way. But it is a lot cheaper to install PVC pipe than it is cast iron or ductile. I guess I have one, I'm sorry, I just have one personal thing. I know you talked about the run for, relay for life. We, the village is involved in Race for, Race to the Flag. It's Sunday, Memorial Day weekend, so please, I know I sent out, we sent out invitations, but please, keep that in mind, we'd love to have all of you out there and support this race, okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? We'll go on to 13, proclamation, board to consider proclamation declaring the week of May 15 through May 21st as National Police Week in Westmont. And we'll read it on Monday. And nobody has anything else on that one? 14, personnel code amendment, board to consider an ordinance amending Section 62-56 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances regarding the use of staffing agencies.
Kathy Casey asked me to look at the existing language and propose an amendment regarding the use of staffing agencies. Oftentimes, between Ron and Kathy, they will hire a temp through, using a staffing agency. Kathy will call a staffing agency, find out whether they have someone, what their hourly rate is, that we would pay, and essentially, Kathy would then take a time card and submit it, use a time card to determine the payment that's owed to the staffing agency, and they don't oftentimes present a formal contract to the village to sign. In some cases, though, they do have a formal contract for the village to sign. The way the ordinance currently reads is that the village will maintain a pre-approved list of staffing agencies. That list is not in existence, because it changes regularly, and changes by specialty. So Kathy's proposing to eliminate the need to maintain a list, and also requiring the village manager and the human resource administrator authority to approve agreements with staffing agencies. As I mentioned in the write-up, if you feel like you want the actual contracts to come before you, when those are proposed, in lieu of, in cases where it's not just the time cards, you can, you know, request that, and that can be added to the ordinance.
I mean, whenever we hire somebody, or have a situation where we have a need to hire somebody, you are generally aware of that anyway. We have a discussion either through the budgeting process, or, you know, a subsequent conversation, we let you know what our staffing needs are. So you're aware of the situation.
I don't think we have to micromanage by looking at a contract.
Thank you. I agree 100 percent, that's why we have staff.
And those contracts are very standard. The only thing you negotiate is the percentage rate, typically, of its attempt to hire. Speaking of that, with one, oh wait, Kathy, do we have a contract now, or was that put on hold, the one that was presented?
That one was, that one is no longer.
Needed? Okay.
It's not relevant at this point.
Okay.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions on this?
Nope.
Okay. 15, finance ordinance.
Wade reading.
Thank you. 16, purchase orders. Any questions on the purchase orders? Now, Katie, here you go.
Can I have a motion to go into executive session for, is it just potential land sale?
Potential land sale and personnel.
Before, and personnel?
My apologies, before we do that, I wanted to ask Ron a quick question. I didn't know if perhaps you had some information you could share regarding the power outages of yesterday, because they were so sporadic in different areas and different times, that residents and businesses got their power back. Just didn't know if you had any further information from ComEd that you could share.
I can, what I can tell you is what we think happened.
Well, same thing ComEd would say.
Yeah. Yeah. What we think triggered it initially, there was some contract work near the railroad tracks, we believe it was in Claretton Hills, there was a crane that was being operated. We think it was part of the sewer work being done through Flag Creek, and apparently hit some lines, knocked those lines down. We don't know if it's a coincidence, or if there's some kind of relationship, but we also had lines that came down near the Labor Ready Building at Cass in Chicago, or Naperville in Chicago. I don't know the exact address. And I believe a fire started there. So our fire department had to respond to that. Those all seem to sort of happen around the same period of time. So, as you know, there was a fairly large area that lost power between 55th Street and somewhere north, I don't know exactly where the northern boundary was. Some of the properties had power restored within about two and a half hours. I was notified a little after 6 o'clock last night that, by ComEd, that they believed that all locations in the village had power restored at that point in time. I did find out today, however, that there, that might not have been 100 percent accurate.
It's not.
And then there was another subsequent outage that we got a notification on, it was further south, that at this point, I don't know what, what the cause of that was. But it was definitely something that was at least triggered by a man-made act, it wasn't something as a result of failure of equipment.
Okay, so it wasn't their infrastructure?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Yes.
To executive session.
Second.
Okay.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Clevene?